This meeting of the Gansett City Council will now come to order and the chair holds on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the road call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Cannon to lead the invitation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. I must praise the heavens, Father, Lord, thank you for the day you've given us, Lord. Thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us, Lord. Also, we thank you, Lord, for all the people that came, Lord, to your city council meeting today, Lord, to hear how your city works, Lord, and how we do the city business, Lord. We ask, Lord, to be with all the candidates that's running for election this year, Lord, let them be able to do the right thing in their heart, Lord. You know what the right thing is, Lord. Please let them be able to do the right thing, Lord. We love you and we praise your name forever, for your name and for your sake, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting held on July 29.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of July 25 through 31.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mr. Mayor. Unfinished business, we have none today.
Mr. President, on last week, we voted to extend the contract for the towers of telecommunications. And I was in a meeting this past week with the young man that we bought in to give us some information, hopefully to hire as a consultant. And I found out, he looked at that contract and I found out that we're being short-changed on that contract. And since I voted on the prevailing side, I'd like to bring that ordinance back up so we can rescind that and give us some time to talk with a consultant as far as leasing that space on that tower. So I may put that in the form of motion to bring that back up.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Okay, this is the motion in second.
Can we discuss it?
We'll discuss.
Who drew up the contract? Did our city attorney draw it up and what does he think about it?
No, the city attorney didn't draw it up. The city attorney told us that last week when we discussed it. You know, in pre-council, we talked about it and of course, and I apologize because I was going to get it, the actual ordinance again.
I'd like to know who drew the contract up and what they think about it. What city official was involved in drawing up the contract?
It was the fire chief. Communications comes up under his department. But I'm not sure, Leader, you know who drew the contract up?
The telecommunication carrier is the one who drew the contract up. It's an extension to existing contract we have with them, which is still in effect. And I think, you know, if you want to get back into this matter, I think the proper procedure would be to do it in pre-council when Chief Carroll's there because he is the one who carried on the negotiations and it is his department and he's not here right now.
Well, that's what I want to do is to bring it back up to rescind it so we can go back in and discuss it with the chief.
We're going to table it then, Robert, and for how long?
Till we can discuss it with the chief and hopefully find out why we're being short-changed and why they're in such a big hurry. Number one, because the contract we got now goes to 17, am I correct?
Well, it does, but the contract might have already been signed and sent off. I mean, I don't know. I mean, this is, we should have brought, I mean, I...
Well, I only got the information this past week after Tuesday's council meeting. If you remember correctly, I tried to get us to hold up upstairs so we could talk to a consultant last week. And of course, we came down and voted on it. And since I voted on the prevailing side, you know, that's why I brought it back up. You're absolutely correct.
But I don't know because we authorized, because the resolution last week was to authorize the mayor to sign that contract.
Yes, sir.
Now, whether the mayor has signed it and once he done it, it's been a forcible contract. So I don't know the status of it at this point.
I don't know either. Has it been signed?
Yep.
Yes, the mayor has signed the contract. I don't believe it's actually been transmitted to the carrier.
So it hasn't been transmitted?
Has not been delivered.
So...
Hasn't been delivered.
So what's the legality of it?
So...
Well, I mean, signature and delivery, you have to have both.
And delivery.
Yeah. So we can, if we want to hold up on it, we do not need to deliver.
But then it's all we have to do is hold it up until we discuss it.
Correct.
So why don't we just do that rather than go through all this other thing? Because if it turns out that it's legit and everything's fine, then we won't have to do anything.
Right.
But he says until it's delivered, there's no contract.
Right.
Okay.
So I'm asking us to hold up on the delivery?
We would just agree to hold up 10 days or however long you want to hold it up.
Okay.
And then at the end of that period of time, after we have a chance to discuss it, then we can act on it.
That's all I asked for.
Is that okay?
That's all I asked for.
Okay, so then you, then I second your motion that we need to hold up.
Well, now let me...
Yeah. Iva, he needs to...
Yeah, I need to change my...
It's a different motion.
So you withdraw yours?
I withdraw my second.
So I withdraw my motion.
That's good.
Now, my motion is to hold up on sending the contract off until we review it.
Second.
I'll second that.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay.
Who was the second?
I seconded.
Three of them seconded.
The whole council seconded.
Okay. Okay. Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor of the motion to hold the contract and to not deliver it, was there a time frame?
He said 10 days.
For a 10-day period? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, number nine, this is a time and place, as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution honoring abatement of nuisances on property located at 30 Lakefront Street in District 6. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Bernie D. Hatch, and wife Willie Kate Hatch, Joe Pearson Neal, and Eddie Pearson. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the building department. This case involves a burned house. We started working it in August of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
While y'all looking at the picture there, that is in my district and that was the house on Lakefront where the kids go to school. They'll be going to school this week down to Florida Elementary down in there. And him setting some middle line, I would like for somebody to put some tape or something around that building. You can see where the whole front's about to fall in.
Johnny, it's the property that's fenced in. We can secure the gate if they're going to the gate.
This is, we can secure something where those kids won't be trying to go in there or something because that's just a hazard right there. I know Mr. Hilton said we couldn't do anything after we passed this, but we'll pass this today, I'm sure.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion further? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten is a resolution reporting election officials. This appoints poll workers for the main election on August 26 election and the runoff election on October 7th, if necessary. It also authorizes the use of 19 DS 200 voting machines. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution authorizing acquisition of property for recreational use. This is for the remaining parcel of a larger tract of property on Hines Road, which was acquired earlier by the city. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
First reading, amending city code to temporarily allow election official, election or campaign signs to be erected on or displayed along the municipal right-of-ways until August 26, 2014. The ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, there are no objections. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote for consent.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You want to go?
No, 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 no. I was just talking about what I just said.
You just talked about what you just said, that's okay. You got a chance to vote. You know, there's been some problems with political signs throughout the history of elections. And I'm sure we're going to have some this time around. As a matter of fact, I think one of the council members is going to address some issues in a few minutes about those signs. But as you know, the law says, and each candidate got a copy of the law when it talks about putting signs in the public right-of-way. I think the candidates pretty much adhere to that, but they'll have a lot of supporters and people who don't. And they put them out in the public right-of-way. And then the city goes out and takes them up because it's against the law. We as incumbents get accused of taking up their signs. And I don't want to be accused of that. And I just thought that, and I know some cities do this, they do suspend the rules just during those municipal elections, so we don't have that problem. And that's all this is, is a positive PR thing to keep candidates from going around saying that we are taking up their signs, our opponents and stuff. And that's all this is. So hopefully, the council can see the good in this and pass it. That's all I had.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I think we pretty much discussed this pretty much last week. And I don't think any of us have a flavor for having signs inadvertently placed in areas where we know that they're not supposed to be degrading the city, you know. And we just don't feel like it's a good thing to make an exception to people, for people to put signs in an area where they shouldn't be, based on the ordinance we should abide by the ordinance that we have passed in past years. And everybody is aware of what the sign should be. And I think we have to keep those persons who are candidates responsible for making sure that their signs are put in the right places.
Call for it.
Well, if anybody wants to blame anybody for about taking up the signs, you can blame me if you want to because I'm encouraging the mayor to make a sweep-through and pick up all these signs that are on the public right-of-way. It's against the law. All the candidates have the information where to put them. So it's up to the candidate to make sure he puts them in a proper place. So if you want to blame somebody, blame me because I'm encouraging to pick them up.
I also like to say, well, most of the signs have been put out, I think, already. But if you can find a sidewalk or someplace where there's a cement and you can put it between that and the yard, it keeps people from having to pick them up and mow underneath them and so forth. So I think they would appreciate it if you would instruct the people who are putting them up to do that instead of just sticking them in the middle of the yard. Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, I've got one yes and five no's. Is that correct?
That's what it sounds like to me.
Okay, it sounded that way.
Councilman Williams was here. If Councilman Williams was here, we'd have six.
Bring it back up if you want to.
Well, I just, you know, normally I don't bring up things when I know, because I can count to four. But I want to make sure my opponent, because I don't know about you guys, I want to make sure my opponent, because these signs are going to probably come up starting today. I want to make sure my opponent knows that I'm not opposed to him putting those signs out there. I don't have a problem. Because I've never seen a sign go into a polling place and vote, so I don't care where they put them.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, new businesses, is there any new business?
Mr. Avery has three.
Oh, yeah, I got three, I'm sorry. Y'all got me all confused about these signs. Mr. President, yes, I have three items I'd like to bring up, and I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider all three at one time.
Why don't we let Iva explain how this came about?
Well, when we get into this, I was going to ask her.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. These are ordinances annexing property back into the city, and it's three different parcels, so I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider all three ordinances today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay.
It's been granted.
Now, I'll make a motion to accept properties located at 1503 Bearview, 226 Sumrest, and 649 Cherry Laurel. And I'd ask the clerk to explain why we're doing this.
Do a second.
Okay, we have a second.
Yeah.
In the process of preparations for the upcoming city election, we had a redistricting that occurred between 2010 and this year's election. So we were doing a lot of work to our street index, which is the tool that we use in the clerk's office, as well as the Board of Registars, to assign voters to their proper district. And in doing so, I guess, I told one resident, I guess we have better tools than we have ever had before. And so in the course of working each street individually to make sure that we had the proper voting boundary districts, as well as the city council districts, we did discover some residences that had previously been thought to be in the city, but in actuality were outside the city limits. So I did compose letters to the voters advising them of this and giving them an opportunity to come to the clerk's office if they felt that my information was incorrect. So that sort of led to these requests. I don't know if there are any other pending requests or not, but certainly, we have the potential for some more.
How many letters did you send out?
I sent about 48 letters. Those were to individual voters, some of those were in the same household.
So we're probably looking at maybe at least 20-some households, probably.
Probably.
And this is just three. I think we used a new GPS system, I think, to make sure that people were in and out.
We have a GIS mapping system now.
A GIS, okay, mapping system.
Yes, we do.
And so what happened, we found out that some of these folks who've been thinking they were in the city for the last, how many years, 20, 30, 40 years, discovered that they're not. And it's, they've been getting city services, the whole nine yards, but now, they're not eligible for city services, police and fire protection, the whole thing. So hopefully, those people who are out there who received those letters are listening. It's a very simple process. City Attorney, will you, again, go over that if you don't mind what they need to do to get back into the city limits so they can be covered?
Well, all they do is come, you know, contact the city clerk to ask or request that they want to be annexed in the city. And we have the proper forms there, and it's at no cost, I believe.
Is that right, Iva, it's no cost?
Yes, I understand. The applications are actually processed through the engineering office. The zoning administrator presents those to the engineering department, and she indicated to me that there is no cost for a residential annexation. If there's a related rezoning for some reason...
Then...
Then some fees would apply with the rezoning.
But just for those...
But just a straight residential annexation, there is no fee.
Okay. So that's what these three are all about. Call for it, of course.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three ordinances, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
They found, they found a way to grow our city, didn't they?
I don't know whether they're growing it or not.
I just wanted to say, I think they...
We ain't got but three out of 48.
I believe we're balanced at all.
We'll get some more.
Yeah, we're balanced.
They think they were already in the city. They thought they were.
They thought they were.
They've been voting.
Yep.
Do that make them illegal?
Illegal votes.
Let's make them legal.
Okay, is there any other new business? Department reports, committed boards, are there any? Citizens' requests, Joseph Cole, financing for the Board of Education. Give your name and address, please, to the city clerk, and please, immature remarks.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Cole. Some people think I have a dual residency, but my present residence is 3851 Kenner Drive, Atlanta, Georgia, 30331. My home house is in Councilman Avery District, which my brother lives there. I have family in Districts 1, 2, 3, and 5. And I know residents in the other two, 6 and 7, 4 and 7, rather. I came today because I have a question for the council, and I have a question for the mayor as well. And my question with the council deals with public comment. I noticed on your agenda, there's not a space for public comment. And I know in order for citizens to speak to the council, they have to go through the clerk's office. It seems to be a burdensome process. So my question is, why don't you have a public comment as a permanent item? You could have a certain amount of time, 15, 20 minutes, whatever, and let the individual come up and speak, and you can give each speaker one minute or two minutes. Sometimes, things may happen on a Saturday or Sunday that the citizen of the city wants to come and speak to the council, but the way it's set up, they cannot do it. So whether you agree with them, whether you like them, if you give the person an opportunity to come, say what they're going to say, and sit down, it would be good. But the way it's set up, and this is only one jurisdiction, I know that you don't have public comment. So I would like to know why you do not have it. And secondly, would you consider putting it on your agenda? You're in the process now of trying to get votes because everybody's running for reelection. So if you can ask a citizen to vote for you, you should allow them to come and speak before this council.
Could I answer that question for you?
Yes, sir.
We had a, several years ago, we had more than one person who abused that privilege. They would come every week with the same drives, the same complaints, and use it as a political tool also. So that's the reason we set up that form. We did it to correct a situation that we were having at that time.
Did you put a time limit on them? You know, you can give them one minute, two minutes.
We had a time limit on them, right.
Okay, but even if they abuse it, you know, that should not take the rights from all others, from some citizens who would want to come.
I agree with you. Anybody who wants to speak, and we let them speak from the floor if they want to, if we give them permission, and I don't know if we turn anybody down.
We take it up his time. I'm going to answer that.
We may have turned somebody down, I don't know. As far as I'm concerned, anybody can speak. I don't, I don't, I agree with you. The citizens should have that right.
I'm going to answer that in my comments. I don't want to take up your time because you got a time limit and they're going to...
Okay, they didn't tell me that because I had two questions.
Yeah.
Because I don't, nobody hit me with a sign.
You have five minutes.
Okay. So hopefully, y'all could have, you know, you can suspend the rules and let me finish my question. But that's good, I'm satisfied with that. Mr. Mayor, I have two questions for you. And one deals with the Board of Education, the financing that the city gives. And if I am mistaken, I'm sure you will correct me, that you give assistance to the board in the amount of probably $1.4 million. I know part of that goes for the bonding to pay for the school and the other amount. And my question to you is, do you and your administration set benchmarks, benchmarks for the Board of Education? For instance, there may be things that you would like to see. Maybe a higher graduation rates, maybe the scores. Maybe they may have a goal that once a child starts school in the city system from grades 1 through 12, they would have read 100 books, something. Do you have benchmarks? And if not, do you think that's something that you should do? Because you're giving them this money and they're free to do what they want to do, but I think you should put some type of benchmarks on them. And I'd like to get your feelings on that, sir.
I'd be glad to tell you, we, in the last eight years, we've put over $13 million in the school system, from career tech buildings. I mean, I could go on for 10 minutes with that. But I really think, and we, you know, from time to time, I know myself and some of the council, when we have issues we want to talk about, we do talk with them. But I really believe that that is a function of the Board of Education to put the guidelines that they want to the superintendent, because we really don't have any authority in that situation except to appoint the board members. The council appoints the board members, the mayor doesn't appoint anybody. But I think that would be more of a board responsibility to lay out guidelines or goals that they want to try to meet that way. We do, however, like I said, because we do fund a lot, we do talk to them from time to time, individuals or whatever, about things we want to, we'd like to see.
Okay, I know you don't want to micromanage them, but I think you should consider, as the mayor and the council, things that you would just like to see in benchmarks. You are giving them this money, so make sure they're living up to it, make sure they're doing the things that you want them to do.
We try to do that.
Okay. I know you are not in the appointing authority, but I think the council, in your appointments to the board, I would ask, I would encourage you to tell your appointees, not to tell them, but encourage them to meet with their constituents. See, there's a complaint in the community that people cannot talk to the board members, they have to go through hoops to go to the board meeting. But if they had quarterly meetings where they would tell the constituents, the citizens, what is going on, and then address the citizens' concern, and then you wouldn't have all this... If you communicate with people, you can get a whole lot done, but if you don't talk to them, they don't know what's going on. So if you would encourage your appointees to have quarterly meetings or whatever, twice a year, with their constituents in the district, let them know what the board is doing, and they can also address their concerns. And it won't be like it was several weeks ago, that you have been hearing things for several years and you had a meeting on. If you're doing this all alone, I think that would take care of that. Let me go on because I look like the clerk is looking at me. My final one to you, Mr. Mayor, is dealing with the consent decree, which happened before your time. That was a suit filed against the city in hiring a black fireman. I am a named plaintiff in that suit, and I spoke to the original, the attorney who filed the original suit this past Friday, and I spoke to a retired federal judge this weekend. I don't plan to bring any legal actions against the city, so I don't want you to worry about that. I was only getting information. But my question to you is, as far as you know, has the fire, in the hiring of blacks for the fire department, of qualified blacks, has it been done on a one-to-one basis?
As far as I know, it has. Personnel department keeps up with that, and the civil service board does the hiring. We don't actually do the hiring. But I know that there, know that there's a consent decree, and of course, the fire chief's not in here, but I'm pretty sure that they're keeping up with that one-to-one as much as they can.
Okay. What percentage of the fire department is black, and what percentage of the, the four black firemen?
I don't know.
And what percentage of the police, do you know?
You can get that from personnel. They have all the records.
Okay. I know the tick-tock is going off, but I desire to have a meeting with you and your city attorney, the police chief, the fire chief, Attorney Donald Watkins, and a member of the SCLC. I know you are in campaigning for reelection to be mayor, so I don't want, I know in three weeks, we are no son, so I'm not trying to get you bound, and I don't want people to say you playing politics, I'm playing politics. After all this is over, and if you're successful, we would like to set up a meeting because there may be some things that we can do, help do as far as getting more blacks employed and getting the departments more diverse.
I know that we're always striving to do that. But when you don't have many show up, and we advertise several, I think what you probably need to do today while you're here is go buy personnel and tell them what you would like to see, and they can get you the whole package of things that go on.
I would do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, President, because I would just like to say, I want... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, President, 'cause I would just like to say, I want to thank the city clerk for her professionalism and courtesy in facilitating my request to the board. So I have questions and complaints, but I don't have any on her. Thank you.
If we have an emergency speech, it needs to be. I don't think we've turned anybody down. All they, all they need to do is, if it's important enough, you know, to come and tell us. These, these guys are pretty, they're, they're pretty, pretty liberal towards letting people speak. We just-
Well, well, let me say this to the other fish, Joe. I, I, I've never had a citizen to come to me at the last minute and say, I want to speak on the council agenda I didn't get in, and I've asked them to suspend the rules. They have. I, you know, I don't say that they all agreed to it, but they let everybody speak. I don't know if anybody they turned down, so I was just gonna address that to you.
And I, I'll echo that, Joseph.
See, like you got this guy standing up here now, wants to say something, and he's not on the agenda. And you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna ask the council if they don't mind hearing whatever he's got to say. I don't have a problem.
He, he is, wait just a minute, wait just a-
Hold, hold, hold.
Wait, wait, just a minute.
No, he, he didn't want to say anything, I don't think. He just, he was just standing up, okay. He didn't want to say anything.
Okay.
I understand he's a candidate, and, you know, candidates can't come in and do camp, well, I don't think they can. I don't have a problem with him doing campaign speech. I have a, I have a press conference every Tuesday. And I'm a candidate, so I don't have a problem with the other candidates coming talking either. But that, since he don't want to talk, we'll leave that alone. Okay.
Okay. Ben, you want to start?
Sure. Well, I, I do want to let Joe know that I absolutely do not have anything against, uh, public comment. I remember in nineteen ninety-four, Mayor, a, a, a man and his wife came up here. And at that time, we didn't say the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. And our council procedures did not cover that. And they came three or four times, and finally, he came to the podium, and he said, wouldn't it be nice if we could say the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag? And since that day, we've said the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. So that's what you do, and your comment was right on. I have no problem with anybody who wants to have a comment up here, as long as it's, uh, not bashing one of us, or you're going, or yourself, or anybody in, uh, in the audience, or anywhere else. We do have procedures to go by. And that's the only way in the world you can run a meeting consistently. Anyway, uh, I want to, I want to say one thing about our putt-putt golf course on the mountain. I ran into a gentleman this week who said he was driving forty-something miles for himself and his wife to play miniature putt-putt golf. And I said, well, you know, all you gotta do is drive up here a mile on the mountain at the, at the park, and we got a state-of-the-art putt-putt. He said, I don't even know where that, what are you talking about? And I said, we spent three point five million dollars on the falls improving it and building a putt-putt up there. Well, he said, I've never heard about it. So what I'm asking Billy Harris, who's chairman of Parks and Rec, I would like to have a sign at the entrance of the falls, if you would put in for that, showing people that we do have a putt-putt. This is a moneymaker. This would be money we can put back into the falls and improve the falls. So I would like to ask that you maybe make that request for a sign big enough to be seen, where the people will know that we do have a state-of-the-art-
Yes.
-putt-putt golf course.
Yes, sir, Mr. Reed. Uh, let the record show that I am requesting that a sign be placed at Nakalula Falls, uh, so that people will know that we have putt-putt at the falls.
You're asking the mayor to do that?
I will tell you, it's not putt-putt, it's miniature golf. But there is a sign out there where you turn to go down to it, and it's on all our brochures and-
We've, uh, we've had-
Facebook and everything.
Honestly, we've requested that sign for two years. We really have, out on Nakalula Road. But my, my main focus here is that the people of Gadsden, Alabama, spent five, three point five million dollars on improvements to that falls. And what we need is a fifteen-dollar sign showing where the putt-putt is.
Kerry Payne, would you look into that for us, please, sir?
Where is it?
He'll see the recording.
Is it here?
We'll send him a memo, uh-
All right.
Ms. Clerk, Ms. Allen, if we'll send Kerry a paint, Kerry Payne a memo asking him to look into that and- see if we can do that.
We actually have a draft of a couple of different versions of the sign. So we're just trying to decide exactly what to do.
Oh.
We'll throw it out there.
Okay.
There are no rideaways. We could actually do that pretty quickly.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant Mayor. We appreciate that.
And thank you, Mr. Harris, for that quick-
See how you get, see how you get results when you-
All I had to do was ask you, it got done.
It's gone.
No problem. Thank you for your indulgence.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to say also, too, we never stop anybody from having public comments up here that I've known of in the past eight years. You just can't come up here and bash anybody here, bash anybody else in the audience, or talk about anybody, but you can come up here and voice your concerns and complaints. And I think we do, you know, do that, and I'm proud that we do that. Uh, we did have a District Six meeting last week. It was an ice, homemade ice cream get-together with music. It was standing room only. It lasted one hour, and we didn't run out of ice cream. We had plenty of ice cream. And I was thankful for that, and I appreciate everybody in District Six that came out for that. Uh, we've been talking about signs today. Uh, as everyone knows, I probably put out more signs than anybody on this podium right here. I probably had three hundred fifty, three hundred seventy, eighty signs out. I started two or three weeks early, and everybody out to get my signs out where I could go and talk to everybody. Uh, everybody, whether it's one of my signs out, has either requested a sign, or wanted one of my signs, or asked for one of my signs, or called me on the phone, or called up here and asked for a sign. And we got them a sign. All the signs that I put out in people's yards was pro, their own property. If I leave a sign in your yard, it's your property. Right there. If anybody comes on your property and damages that sign, you have the right to file a complaint. And if we find out who's done that, you can take them to court. I have pictures of three here. This is just the start of three signs. It was vandalized yesterday, Monday morning, Tuesday morning, something. That's one picture right there of it. That actually was twenty foot from my bedroom right there. They did that one. This is another one up on Cabot Avenue. They did right here. They vandalized this sign. Here's another one that was on, uh, I think this was on Coolidge Circle right here, if I'm not mistaken. They went out, whoever did this vandalized. I figured it out yesterday, just a quick count. It was twenty-something signs that they spray painted. There's about fifty signs more that was taken up or they did away with. They either threw them in the road, threw them in ditches, threw them in woods, or took them with them. I don't know who's doing this, but my thing is, whoever's doing this, I'm gonna ask you one time to please stop. The election is three weeks away from today. You might not like me, and that's just your problem if you don't like me, but please do not go in people's yards and vandalize the signs I have put in those people's yards. Those signs are property of those people, and they will prosecute you as well as besides me. Uh, we've got a small reward. If anybody knows who did this, if they'll turn the people in, and once they're prosecuted through city court, there will be a reward for you. I'm not saying how much, but that's it. Uh, it depends on what the judge decides, I guess, about what the fine would be for this. But whatever the fine is, that's what the person's gonna get for the reward out there. Like I said, we've got a bunch of people that'll go ahead and file against these people that's doing this. There's no reason in the world for you to go out and damage signs. I looked around yesterday, and there's four, five, six signs close to mine. Nobody else's signs was damaged but mine. So that means it was picking on my people and my signs. I do not appreciate that. I want you to stop, and I will prosecute you, so will these other people. So please, you can wait three more weeks. You can go to the polls and vote, do whatever you want to, but do not go in anybody's yard and vandalize any more of their signs. Thank you.
Uh, Johnny and I had a joint, uh, District Five and District Six meeting last, uh, Tuesday, an ice cream supper, and Johnny had more people out than I did. I concede that. But I had better ice cream than you. Maybe.
I'm glad you brought that up, Bill, 'cause I, I forgot you was buying my lunch today. Glad you reminded me of that.
I don't remember making such a first thing, but I'll buy you lunch. Uh, I'm just curious, we had a good-looking bunch of young folks come in. Who are you, and welcome?
Would you introduce them, please?
Well, these young men are a part of my baseball team that we're putting back in East Coast. They actually have some to love. They're willing to pay big costs and alcohol. They don't want to only see the council, they live a job for, for all of the nineteen. You can say, say what you want to say, whatever it is you want to say. If you can give the action, we're, we're saying the prayer. So y'all would like to come out and have an influence. Um, job pools are part of the new guy's future. I'm also teaching them stuff outside of baseball, life, the council, the technical skills. You do things good.
Okay.
Also, nineteen, six P M. All y'all are candidates. Job pools providing the sound system stage. You're also the table. Put your advertising on. We're going to sponsor the flyers, the T P S, for any of our interests. How do y'all get involved?
Okay, thank you very, very much. Appreciate y'all being here.
No problem.
That's all I got.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, uh, Brother Joe, they, they're, they're very lenient when it comes down to, to people coming up. Sometimes they get irritated, but I don't care. I still ask them to suspend the rules and let them talk. Uh, 'cause things do happen over the weekends and stuff like that. So, you know, we, we, um, try to be very, very lenient when it comes down to letting people do public comments. Uh, you talked about the, uh, fire department lawsuit. You talked, and you didn't talk about the police lawsuit. And it's a strange thing. There was a lawsuit filed against the Gadsden Police Department. I, I talked to retired police officer Faye Gary on last night. And I've been to the attorney's office. I, I've researched, and we can't find that lawsuit nowhere. Talked to former city attorney Roger Kirby, who said, yeah, there was a lawsuit, and I remember it. Uh, he's no longer here, but we can't find that lawsuit. And I, I found that very, very strange. Uh, I, I do remember that myself, along with, uh, Lieutenant, I call her Lieutenant Faye Gary, um, Otis Jennings, uh, and my wife filed that lawsuit. And we were all offered jobs back during that time. But, you know, strange things happen around this city, so, uh, hopefully, they're living up to the, the, the fire department. I think they are based on one of the individuals who's on that, uh, review board, uh, who interviews, uh, firemen after they go through that process of be, being hired. There is a, uh, one black on that, uh, review board, and he says that they, they pretty much adhere to it. The problem is, we don't have enough people applying, I think, uh, for the fire department and for, uh, the police department. And if I had to do it all over again on the career shoot, I'd, I'd go to the fire department. And they got one, they got one of the best jobs in the world, and they make good money. And I don't understand why young folks don't understand that, but there is good money there in that fire department. You work twenty-four hours. You lay around if there's no fire and nobody gets sick. You, you cook and eat and watch TV, and you get paid. And, yeah, go to Johnson's to buy groceries. And, but then you're all forty-eight hours, you know, and a lot of those guys have second careers. So I'm, I'm, I'm making a commercial and a push for people to apply for those jobs, 'cause they're great jobs.
Let me interrupt you-
Sure.
And say something that I know, uh, 'cause one of my relatives just is going through the fire. It is tough, tough, tough training to become a fireman. So many people try, but they fail.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a tough course. I mean, you, you've got to be really an outstanding young person to, to get through that, uh, screening that they do for firemen.
Yeah, but fuck-
Can I, can I go one time?
Sure.
It's on my mind. I can sit and watch the firemen from my house when Fifth Street was on fire. And those guys were jumping, and the fire was coming up in between the buildings.
Yeah.
And they were putting their lives in danger constantly. And they never know when they're gonna be called.
Yeah.
They really, really don't. So I think back to nineteen eleven. How many died in nineteen eleven?
Nineteen eleven?
Well, nineteen eleven. Nine eleven.
Nine eleven.
Okay, you can-
Bob Echols and I were the only ones alive in nineteen eleven.
Back in nineteen eleven, you were alive.
He could probably think back that far. None of us can.
But when, but when you think about a fireman, a policeman, their lives are at stake every time they stop a car, every time a building catches on fire, every time a fire medic truck goes out, whatever. But anyway, in their defense, and I know what Robert's talking about, I absolutely, it's a beautiful career if you can live through it.
It's a great career.
If you live through it.
Okay, I, I'll just, the last thing I want to say, I want to, uh, thank, uh, Leroy for his work with our young peoples. Uh, I see him just about every day in my neighborhood, picking up some of the kids who play on his baseball team. And he's very dedicated to our young people, and we just need more people like him, so. The nineteenth you said is, I think we've got that information, so we're, we're gonna try that here, too. That, that's all I got.
I think, uh, Joe, that one of the problems we have is not, we, we let the people speak, but we have no control over the council speaking. We used to, uh, get through about thirty minutes, and now, if we get through in an hour, we're doing good. So, uh-
It, it's called election time, and it's called campaigning.
Uh, uh, Robert, Robert, no, we're not gonna let you get away with that. That's, that's, that's every Tuesday, that's every Tuesday.
Your own.
Thank you, Mr. President. See, I, okay. Thank you, uh, Brother Cole. We appreciate your comments today. And, you know, all of the, uh, all of your questions and comments are, are all being taken under consideration by this council and this mayor. We, we, we surely and truly understand that. Uh, as you know, the, the meeting that we had with the boat, school board, you know, and the superintendent and all, the thing, one of the, one of the primary things that came out of that was the fact that we don't, we insist that we have a joint meeting every quarter. Don't, we can't go a year. So the, these things that you're talking about, our, our interest and, and, and things that we think need to be done in our school system can be heard by the whole school board and, and not just one person. So a lot of, and, and, like Robert said, and a lot more people, you know, uh, I don't think I can remember us denying anyone the privilege of coming to this council and speaking. Of course, you know, you've got to have a process and a procedure to go by. Otherwise, things would get out of hand. But no one, as far as I know, has ever been denied the right to speak before this council, so. But we'll continue to work on those things. That, that, that's what we call work in progress, you know? You always can do things differently or better than you're doing it now, so we'll continue to work on those things. The, um, I, I got a, I got, I got a, I got a disturbing, uh, well, I was in a disturbing conversation last week when a, 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 a young man whose child is in school, uh, and he goes to, he was going, I should say, to school and eating lunch with his son every day. Uh, and which is a good thing. Uh, we, we're talking about parent, parent involvement and being in your schools and everything. Uh, he, this gentleman told me that the principal at that school told him the policy at that school was that you could not come to visit your child but one time a week. Now, let me, you know, let me say I have a serious problem with that. I have not verified that yet. I have not, I have not verified it, but this person would have no reason to tell me that if someone hadn't told him that he can't come to the school once a week, as much as we want parents in schools. So I promise you, I assure you, that I will be investigating, digging into that to find out if that is true. If that is true, we have a serious problem. We have a serious problem if someone told someone that you can't come to visit your child but once a week in school. So stay tuned, because you will hear more from me about that. The, uh, I met a new, I, I met a new guest tonight last week. Uh, gentleman and his son, you know, uh, his wife hadn't come in yet, but his son is gonna be going to Gadsden City High School, playing basketball. And he works for the waterworks department. And he came, he came to Gadsden out of, out of Kentucky, I believe it was. And he came to Gadsden, and he visited Nakalula Falls. And he was so impressed with Nakalula Falls. He said, the reason that he actually took the job at, at the Water Works and Sewer Board was because of the fact that he appreciated and loved Nakalula Falls so much, until he wanted Gadsden to be his home. Because he felt like, you know, if you've got something like that here, things must be pretty good. So that, that was the, that was the primary reason that he took the job. So we, we've got a jewel up there, you know, as everybody knows. We got a jewel in Ben. We'll get that sign up there. So everybody know we got miniature golf up there at the falls also. But I, I just want you to know, you know, that we do have something wonderful up there, and we want to take event, full advantage of it, as well as the walking trails and everything. we want to take full advantage of it, as well as the walking trails and everything else, my friend. The, I'm going to say, there's no, there's no place in our city for vandalism, you know, for people to go and destroy signs and things like that. That, you know, that just doesn't, just doesn't speak well for a citizen who would do that. You don't have to tear down signs and everything else and vandalize people's property and stuff like that. Just vote. Just go vote however you feel, what your conviction is. Vote your conviction. You don't have to do that. So I'm going to ask people to please cease and desist from whatever, however it is, lawyer, attorney. Cease and desist, I guess, or something like that, from destroying people's property, okay? And now, the last thing I have is our illustrious engineer is going to give us an update as far as where we are on resurfacing our streets.
What an introduction. Thank you.
Anytime.
That ain't what I said about you upstairs.
Yeah. I'm being set up for something. We had a pre-construction meeting last Thursday and signed the contracts, the bonds, payment bonds, performance bonds are now in. They have 30 days to begin work. So that started on July the 31st, so I believe that makes it August the 30th. Now, they have the right to come in before then, and we are encouraging them to start as quickly as possible, because these summer days, you know, will be gone before we know it, so the weather's great. But a list of the streets, I just want to repeat, I think we've said this before, is on our website, thecityofgadsden.com. Go to the engineering department and look under current, current projects, and you'll see a spreadsheet with all the streets on the website.
Do we do this by the numbers, Chair?
By the, I'm sorry.
Do we do the resurfacing by the numbers, like starting at one and going through seven?
No, no, no. No, no, let me say, you always start at the top and work your way down.
But I always learned, I always was taught the way you count.
We start wherever they want to start.
I was always taught, Chair, that when you, when you're learning how to count, you start at one.
You save a lot of money on gas, though, going downhill.
In all seriousness, there's no contract provision for where they start.
Can we get the Gadsden Times to print where those people are?
If they haven't already. Okay.
Where they're going to be, since it sounds like to me that people are not going to know until the election.
They're not going to know.
Let me say this about...
It's probably not a bad thing.
Let me, let me make something clear about the paving. We have seven districts. We're a little over, so I think, $2.3 million this year in paving, and we divide that as equally as we can among the seven districts. So if somebody's out there telling you, "I can get more paving in this district," he's telling you a little stretch of the truth. So that's how we do it. We divide it up as equally as we possibly can and spread the money as far as it'll go equally.
Well, we do that, but we need to do more of what the worst ones. His department goes out and looks, but he can't see every one that's needed, and so we have to help him occasionally. And the ones that need it the worst need to be done. There's three streets that go into the mall, and I think you're trying to get the state to help you pave them. Third, Fourth, Fifth.
Yes, sir. Those are qualified for NPO funding, and so anytime we can get 80% federal assistance, we're going to try to do that. That's a no-brainer. Just not, not all streets, of course, are NPO qualified, but that's a great point. We do get requests from the council, we get requests from the mayor's office. But we also, one of, I mean, this is our biggest one, we get them from the citizens. So call our office. We keep a spreadsheet every year. Those roads that do not get paved that particular year do not roll off that list. That is a continuing list. But we reevaluate those streets every year. So call our office, 256-549-4520. They'll ask you what your name is, where you live, but you just tell them the street name and where's the worst parts, and we'll come out and take a look at it. Third Street, yeah, that's a good point, Shane. Third Street has already been selected as one of our A-trip projects. We are currently waiting on the Department of Transportation to get authorization to sign a contract on that, to get it designed, but it's already in the works, that and Goodyear Just takes time.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. It's 256-549-4520.
Mr. President, the final thing that I have is that school starts this week, I think, and let's, let's be careful driving through our school districts. You know, we've got two in particular, you know, that people just don't want to seem to slow down, but let's be mindful of the fact that there are kids, you know, crossing these streets, and the police chief, we're going to be very, very adamant about the fact that you will slow down going through those, going through those school zones. Chief would like to see a few more tickets ready for people speeding through the school zone.
Billy, I'm glad you brought that up. The longest yard sale starts Thursday, and I believe school, Mitchell School, starts on the same day. So we're going to have it, we're going to have it full-time up there, so everybody be patient. The police department, I'm sure, is going to be there full-time as much as they can. It's going to be a fiasco.
To say the least.
To say the least.
Yeah. And, and, and our school, Litchfield Middle School, I have committed myself to mentioning that school to us every Tuesday, every time I have a chance. Get out there and support Litchfield Middle School, City of Gadsden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Before we go to the mayor, one quick announcement, Mr. President. We have a local boxer who competed in the national tournament, and I forgot to make that announcement. Willie Lovett, Lovett, participated in that tournament, and I think that's something we need to talk about, positive stuff, with our young folks doing.
Robert, you forgot to mention when you were talking about the firemen, that they have the fire medics, and every time, they go out all the time, and not only is it a good job, but they're the most loved people by the constituents.
That's right. I agree.
Because, mainly because of the firemen, and they do a good job of it. It's expensive, but they do a good job of it. I'll entertain a motion we adjourn.
Mayor, mayor, mayor.
The mayor.
Oh, mayor, did you want to say something?
I've only got 15 minutes to talk.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Now, I'm going to be quick. We do have excellent fire department, and most of our guys end up going through the paramedic training, just about all of them. We helped them with that at Gadsden State, and they, they are real professionals. They know what they're doing, and people feel better when they show up. But mainly what I was going to say, I spent Saturday over at Carver at the unveiling of that artwork over there. There's a big partnership going on between the cultural arts, the Gadsden Art Museum and the Carver Museum. They're going to be putting some different things around town, which is going to be, be really good. And then Sunday, I was at it, I saw him back there, but he left. Ed Jones, Pastor Jones, has a packed the van thing about 6 o'clock Sunday, and it had music and food and the blowups and all. They had a big crowd over there, and that was really good to help get supplies to go back to school. So there's a lot of things going on. People are starting to realize, you just sort of be looking, you can find out, and we're going to be getting some more of these electronic devices that'll keep you posted on a lot of things. That's all I got to say.
You can have part of the mayor's 15 minutes.
I'll give my last 30 seconds.
At the Family Success Center, Crayman's Van, isn't that this Saturday?
They've already had it.
It was last Saturday?
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
They need additional money if you want to give some.
You can still give.
Yeah, that goes to all the Title I schools. And Ben, Ben's different, and what he gives goes to the one on the mountain. What is that?
Mitchell Elementary School. It's not a Title I school. Doesn't make sense.
When I say Title I, that means that they get federal money, when you're Brown and Mitchell don't get federal money. They're not Title I, so they don't get it. Now, I'll entertain a motion we adjourn.
So much.